Well, I can see the sun with my head to the ground. Tears in my vision and weigh my heart down. But I found a secret when I knelt to pray when I...
It's a fact, it's a fact, troubles just all roll away. Roll away, roll away, Lord. Roll away, roll away, Lord. It's a fact, it's a fact, troubles just all roll away.
Well, I can't see the sun with my head to the ground. Tears in my vision that weigh my heart down. But I found a secret when I knelt to pray when I lift up my head and he lifts up my heart and my troubles just all roll away.
Roll away, roll away, Lord. Roll away, roll away, Lord. It's a fact, it's a fact, troubles just all roll away. Roll away, roll away, roll away, roll away.
Well, good morning. It's good to be back together again this morning. We're so thankful for what the Lord did for us last night. It was so wonderful to be together and the presence of the Lord was in this place. And this morning, we moved the prayer room from the little room to the big room. So this afternoon, we'll be adding on another 10,000 square feet. Because it was full too, amen. I believe people are ready to receive. Amen, amen. Well, you know what? The Lord looks down and when he sees a hungry heart, he wants to fill it. So we come today expecting, anticipating, and excited about what the Lord is gonna do. Brother Josh is gonna lead us in some songs of worship.
362. 362. 362. Amen. Just a little while. It doesn't matter how long it is. It's just a little while. While it's just a little while, let's keep singing. 213, it keeps me singing. 213, it keeps me singing. It keeps me singing, 213. Dance with me, a man of men, oh. Jesus, sweet and good. And all I am winning is Christ. In all I do, through the Lord. Jesus, sweet and good. She lives, my love. He is my heaven. His salvation is my glory. All my life was spent to see that. It's filled my heart with thee. You are my best friend, still the love who comes again. Jesus, sweet and good. Oh, sweet, let's lay my love. He is my everything, love. If there's sin, I'll say no. Bested on the regions of this earth. Rested in the shoveling tree. Now with His fruit, I'm smiling. And His fire, the child, that sings. Jesus, sweet and good. Sweet and good, my love. He is my everything, love. If there's sin, I'll say no. God's a champion, true and good. Fire, soul, the cross, yes, we. God's a friend, the cross is my treasure. Sing us, Lord, the way. Jesus, sweet and good. Let's lay my love. He is my everything, love. If there's sin, I'll say no. Soon it's coming back to welcome you. I'll be on the starry side. To the cross, oh. As our friend, we will. Jesus, sweet and good. Oh, glory be to God, amen. Let's lay my love. He is my everything, love. If there's sin, I'll say no. Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. Jesus, sweet and good. Let's lay my love. He is my everything, love. If there's sin, I'll say no. What a hope we have. What a hope we have. We will be miserable if we didn't have the hope of heaven in our heart. Glory be to God. He will keep hiding our soul. 111. The next song is "He Hided My Soul", 111. Glory be to God. We're gonna sing all the four verses, 111. I want to sing. Jesus, my love. He's taken my blood and my soul. He won't ever be gone. Shadow, with you, he will be. Let's sing. He hideth my soul in the blood of the rock. The shadows are dry, thirsty land. He hideth my life in the dead of his love. And God has seen them within his eyes. And God has seen them within his eyes. With love, I wish, yes, I wish. Oh, many, 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 many. Let me, let me, let me, let me. I sing to my God. Glory, glory be to God, amen. My soul, my love. He hideth my soul in the blood of the rock. The shadows are dry, thirsty land. He hideth my life in the dead of his love. And God has seen them within his eyes. And God has seen them within his eyes. When Lord, in his brightness. Small, when I rise to meet him, I'll surrender. His light, his vision, his love, oh. Glory be to God. The shadows, we are blind. Sing it, sing it, amen, amen, oh Lord. He hideth my soul with the blood of the rock. The shadows are dry, thirsty land. Amen, Lord. Oh, he hideth my life with the dead of his love. And God has seen them within his eyes. And God has seen them within his eyes. Glory be to God. Our song before prayer, "It Is Well With My Soul", 112. We'll sing the four verses standing up. We're gonna sing all the four verses standing up. And you transition into what it did, that will be in the same key. Thank you. 112, we stand sing all the four verses. We stand sing all the four verses. Amen. 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 Glory be to Jesus! Amen. 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 Oh, glory be to God! Oh! Yes! Amen. 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 Glory be to God! Amen. 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 Glory be to God! Amen. Oh, the day that will be when my Jesus... Oh, we're looking forward to that day! When look upon his face, God who saved me! Oh, glory be to God! When he speaks, see by the hand, and he's met through the promised land! On the day, the glorious day! There is coming a day, there is coming a day, there is coming a day, oh! There is coming a day, when no more tears out in the sky, no more tears today! Ah, his face forever! Thank you, Lord! On the land, I be... Thank you, Jesus! We look forward to that day! On a day... Only a saint as you! Oh, sing it! Look forward to that day! Thank you, Lord! On a day that will be when my Jesus... Oh, I look forward to that day! Glory be to God! When I look upon his face, I want to know saved me by his strength! When he speaks, see by the hand, and he's met through the promised land! On a day, the glorious day! That will be! Amen. Truly looking forward to that day! You know, I think we're getting a little bit of heaven right here this morning. I think it's gonna be just a little bit like this in heaven, even better, amen? Oh, we thank the Lord! The Lord is working, folks! The Lord is here! The Lord wants to hear and answer prayer! He wants to answer your prayer! He wants to save souls! He wants to sanctify holy! He wants to fill with his presence holy spirit! He wants to prepare us for that day! That day when he takes us by the hand! And leads us through the promised land! Oh, what a day! What a day! Oh, we're so thankful for Jesus! So thankful for Jesus! Oh, you know, one of the things we look forward to in heaven is there'll be no more sickness, no more pain, no more tears. But this morning we have a need. We have a brother, a dear brother to us here in the Midwest, Brother John Wolf. He's having some health issues. He's in the hospital this morning, been in the hospital for several days. And he's facing a serious surgery come Monday. And we wanna take the opportunity this morning, we have a cloth that we're gonna take and deliver to him, Lord willing, later this weekend. But we're gonna anoint that this morning. And the ministers, we're gonna gather around and pray. I have a scene on my Bible, open to James 5, where the Lord instructs us when we have a need of healing, to come! To come in a prayer of faith will heal! And we believe that this morning! We do! We do! And so we're gonna pray. We're gonna pray that the Lord is gonna touch our brother John. You know, we scheduled for surgery on Monday, but we don't know the Lord can touch him before the surgery ever happens! And we come in faith believing this morning that the Lord's gonna touch him. No matter how the Lord chooses to do it, we believe the Lord's gonna touch him. But we'll anoint him at the time, ask the ministers to gather around, but let us all pray. Let's all lift our hearts to the Lord this morning and just bring our brother John before him. After we finish praying for Brother John, we will ask Brother Sholo to lead us in prayer. Let's just gather around. Oh, our precious heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we're just coming for you this morning. Lord, we thank you, Lord! We thank you that we're coming for you. We thank you for your... We thank you for your love! We thank you for your... We thank you, Lord, for your goodness to me. Oh, Jesus! We thank you, Lord! That we cry about you, Lord, pray, brother John this morning, Lord Jesus! Oh, we're just not gonna be able to be right in the heart, right where he is. Touch him with a mighty way, Lord! Lord, we know there's nothing too hard for you, Lord, but speak the word, Lord, for the healing when he comes, Lord! Touch our brother in the name of Jesus! Oh, compliment his faith, Lord, if he looks to you, Jesus, and he trusts you, Lord, Jesus! Oh, honor his faith, Lord! We've taken his promise by your stretch of hand, Lord, we believe that today, Lord! Thank you for what you're doing, we believe you're gonna do, Lord, we give you all the glory and praise, and we ask to sing in the precious name of Jesus. Amen. Amen.
Our gracious, wonderful heavenly Father, we thank you. What a day that will be! When at Jesus we shall see! We are thankful, Lord, what a glorious hope we have! Paul said, "If only in this world we have hope, we have all men most miserable." But we thank God that we have a hope, that at the end of this world, Lord, we will see Jesus. Gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for the Midwest, all the Midwest churches. We are grateful for every family. We are grateful for every individual. Lord Jesus, you promised, you said, "Upon this rock, Jesus Christ, you will build your church, and the gate of hell will never be able to prevail against the church of God." We are grateful, Lord, that Midwest churches continue to march forward. Lord, accept our thanks. Jesus, accept our praises. Even the last night, we witnessed, Lord, the mighty at pouring. But, Lord, the best is yet to come. We know that throughout this day, Lord, you will bless, you will save souls, even this meeting, Lord, sanctify, fill with the Holy Spirit, Lord. Raise up a mighty army, Lord Jesus, an army of young people who will be saved, sanctified, filled with the Holy Spirit, all go through the nooks and crannies of this Midwest, Lord Jesus, and we sows for you, Lord. Oh, we know you are able, abundantly able. As this service progresses, may the Spirit of God, the Spirit of God, the presence of God, the power of God, the glory of God rest upon this service, Lord. Bless the message, the messenger, Lord, the author of this service, Lord. Oh, all that will be said and done, may it lift up the name of Jesus. Oh, you said, "If you and you be lifted up," you would draw men unto yourself. We look to you this morning because your one says, "Looking unto Jesus, the author and the finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, but God hath highly lifted him up and given him a name that is above our names, that in the name of Jesus every knee will bow, every tongue will confess. We come in the name of Jesus. This morning we come in the name of Jesus. Let every knee bow, let miracles be wrought. Do what you only can do, Lord. Do what you only can do, Lord. Oh, send us your power, Lord. Send us your glory, Lord. Give us another Pentecost, Lord. We need another Pentecost, Lord. The church needs another Pentecost. We need an eternal revival, Lord. A revival that washes us into heaven, Lord. Send us that revival. Lord, you are able, abundantly able. Your one says you are able to do exceedingly, abundantly, above all that we can ask or think of. But we pray in the name of God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. We pray in Jesus holy name.
Amen. Amen. We thank the Lord today. Amen. Truly, it is so good to be together. Oh, amen. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Oh, glory be to God! Amen. Amen. Fellas, God is so good to us. So good. Look around. This building you sit in right now is evidence of God's love, God's mercy, God's grace, and God's miracle-working power. Folks, this building almost got torn down to build houses on, but here we have it today, worshiped in it, the power of God flowing through this place. We thank the Lord. God is good. Amen. We do welcome you back this evening at seven o'clock for a youth service and a little bit of housekeeping. As I look around and then I look behind me and see the orchestra, well, we're not planning to have orchestra tonight, but orchestra, I think you've already found your seats. Because I don't think there's any place for you out there. So orchestra, you don't have to play tonight, but you can still sit on the platform. Thank you. But we do look forward to a wonderful time. But again, we don't want to squander this moment. We wanna take advantage of this service, this prayer service. You know, we have such a wonderful time in our services and we sing praises to God and God works and we have testimonies and we hear the word of God. But folks, it's around the altars of prayer that lives are changed. It's when we get to the end of the service that the service really begins. Let's take advantage of that today. Oh, we thank the Lord. Tomorrow, Lord willing, we do plan to have service beginning at ten o'clock. And so plan to join us, plan to be here early. I announced that last night and we were pulling up to the church this morning and my wife says, "Oh, we'll be fine getting here an hour early, we'll be the first ones here." We were almost the last ones here. The parking lot was full. Praise the Lord. Another little housekeeping thing, one of the blessings that came from not having this building for a time is the church that had it thought that they needed a bigger parking lot. And so they doubled the size of our overflow parking lot for us. I'm glad they did, because we still don't have enough parking. But I will warn you, it's been raining, in case you hadn't noticed. And if you get off the gravel part, well, St. Louis thanks you for the donation of your car. We'll dig it out, we'll sell it, and the proceeds will go to the Lord, we appreciate that. But yeah, let's stay on the gravel or you will get stuck. And so just be careful out there and be careful walking across the parking lots and things, they are slick. So be careful. It's testimony time. Oh, I'd be remiss. We have several that have joined us since last night. I'd like to again formally welcome Brother Pete's Furl from Sacramento. He's here with us this weekend and we're so thankful for Brother Sholo and Sister Tolu who are able to join us as well. And we do plan to do, take just a few short minutes in our service tomorrow morning and do a rededication of this building. We dedicated this building to the Lord as an apostolic faith church. Our cornerstone was covered for a time, but our cornerstone's uncovered and it says "Apostolic Faith Church" out there. And we're just gonna rededicate it to the Lord that it continues to be an apostolic faith church. We'll take a few minutes to do that tomorrow morning. Amen. My head's just spinning, can you tell? It's testimony time. I believe we have many who have a shout to give to... We dedicated this building to the Lord as an Apostolic Faith Church. Our cornerstone was covered for a time, but our cornerstone's uncovered, and it says Apostolic Faith Church out there, and we're just gonna rededicate it to the Lord that it continues to be an Apostolic Faith Church. We'll take a few minutes to do that tomorrow morning. Amen. My head's just spinning, can you tell? It's testimony time. I believe we have many who have a shout to give to the Lord this morning, so we'll have a special at this time, we'll ask one of them to open up our testimony services, let's stick with one minute testimony, so we can get in as many as possible, and we'll have a short type of testimonies before our last special, and Brother Pete brings the word for us again this morning.
Well, I'm thankful to be here, I'm thankful to the Lord that I'm saved, I thank the Lord for the journey mercies from Milwaukee. You know, when we set out to the drive, I did not expect the rainstorm that was going on here in Southern Illinois and also in Missouri, but I think that the Lord was guiding the wheels. Actually, it's a funny story, because as we were going, I was running this song over, and this rain and the storm, and then I was singing, and it was so calming and so, just brought joy to my heart, and you know, the Lord took control of the wheel, and he brought us here safely. I just thank God for everything he's been doing for the Milwaukee church, for the Milwaukee family, and how he's been blessing us. Please pray my strength to the Lord, I want to go all the way with him.
I thank God for the privilege to be here this morning. I thank God for the salvation of my soul. I thank God for keeping me, since he saved me, he's been with me on the mountain, in the valley, and in between. This week, I thank God for that we can call on the name of Jesus at any time. During sudden accident, major or minor, he's also always there. When you call people that might be of help and they are not available, Jesus is right there to help. I caught, I was trying to cook, and I cut this finger very deep, and it started bleeding from past eight, and it's not small bleeding, and it will not stop. At the point, my husband went to Walgreens, and you know, I Google, okay, what could cause bleeding, nano clotting? He said that after about fifteen to twenty minutes, you need to seek medical help, and this was bleeding, so I carried it up like this, and I said, Jesus, please touch this, Lord, touch it, and you know, Jesus came down, and he touched the bleeding, the pain, the numbness that I started feeling, he took it away. Even the second day when the bleeding started again, I just said, Lord, take care, and he's been taking care of it. I just want to give him the balance of my life.
I really thank God for saving me, sanctifying me, and filling me with his Holy Spirit. I thank God for the recent healing that he had of my son, that's okay. So on Monday, I flew into Dallas, and he had the surgery in the morning of Tuesday. So Wednesday, about 3:00 a.m., I got up from my bed, and I saw that the light in his own room is up, and is on, so I was like at 3:00 a.m., so I went in there, and he told, you know, we talked about it, like I have only one minute. So it was like, he went in for correction of two things, and then he had an additional thing that he had to worry about, and he couldn't move his toes, you know, so I prayed, we prayed together, and something said, I remember Brother Jim's testimony about how God asked him to raise his hand, and I think the spirit of God told me to touch his leg and pray, so I said, I wanted to do it quietly, so that he doesn't know, but I said, he's a Christian, so he will understand. So I touched his foot, and we prayed, nothing happened at that time, but there was another religious group that he usually prays with on Wednesday. So while they were praying, he texted about what was going on, and they prayed for him, and I know people that knew about the surgery prayed for him too, and all of a sudden, his toes started wiggling, and we were like praising God, and now he could walk no food, I mean, God is good. So when I heard about Brother John's, that his surgery is on Monday, I said, okay, we're having special meeting here, everybody's gonna be praying for him, and I know that God will do this.
Praise the Lord, praise the living Jesus. I want to thank everybody, and to thank God for the journey mercies, for us to be in this place, because the Lord has a purpose for our life, and that purpose must be accomplished by the power in the blood of Jesus. I want to thank the Lord for the pastor of the church that I'm coming from Chicago, that I've made a way and said, you know, when you know the daughters of light and the sons of dark light, you know them anywhere they are. So he said that I have to be here, because I was unable to like be walking on my own, you know, like walking, not using anything, I have to use something before I can walk. But I thank the Lord, since that last Sunday that I was in the church, and the prayer was going on, and I cried unto the Lord, I said, it's only you that I have, I don't have any other person, nobody will help me, even if I'm, you know, telling them the truth, I don't know anybody will help me. As of now, I was saying somewhere, and the house that I was saying, I have to move from the house, because I was unable to pay my husband's pass last, 2020, and people have been helping, I've seen the hand of God, I've seen his powerful hand, those that put their trust in the Lord, let them continue to put their trust in Lord, for there is nothing too hard for the Lord to do, unless he doesn't want to do it. Ah, Father, I thank him, I give him the glory, I will continue to fellowship with the people of God, I will continue to move on as far as my life is on this earth, I will continue to look forward unto him as the author and the finisher of faith. Thank you, Lord Jesus, in Jesus' name.
Last night, we were told about the word offer, and I didn't understand what it was, your mom told you to say thank you to your dad, that was not an offer, but I learned something last night. It was exactly four years today, when the doctors told my wife that I wasn't gonna make it out of the hospital from the COVID. And when the doctors said they have done everything they could do, well, we know what the results are, but the great physician reached out and he rescued me, and he healed me completely. Through the prayers of the saints, I'm here today to thank him, to make my offer, to thank you, Jesus.
Alleluia. I want to thank God for the gospel, I want to thank God who saved me, sanctified me, and baptized me with the Holy Ghost. I want to thank God who have been looking after us from the time we came to America. It has been now about, approximately about seven years whilst we are in this country. What I want to thank God is, he has done so many things for us, you know, a lot, some of them you just ask yourself, what can I do to God, but there's nothing, it's only that you just need to praise him. You know, when we came to America, the first thing we did, we went to the bank, it was about a month, we opened our account, so when we went to open our bank account, when we had finished, I just said, please can you give us a loan for a house? And then they said, they laughed, in fact, they laughed, there were two of them, they said, you need to have five years in America for you to get a house. Then when they said that, I just said, I worship a living God who is in heaven, and that God is not going to wait for those five years. And then I said, we need a place to live. I tell you, after two months, they called us, and then they said, can you come and see us? And the first thing I did was, we don't have credit that you are asking for, I've forgotten that I had said we have got a living God, they said, please come, and we went there the next day, and then the moment we got into the bank, they said, congratulations, the bank has been picking up names of people, and your name has been picked, and you are one of them who is being offered a housing loan, go and look for any house that you want, we are not giving you any limit. Then I said, no, 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 we don't want too much, we don't want, because you know, I'm trying to limit God, but you know, when I went home, we discussed with my husband, then we said, we just want a little, a little money that we can pay. So you know, everything went through and about, we managed to look for the house two months, we managed to get a house, and then the closure, it actually took about two and a half months. After that, when they had finished everything, they said, we are also going to give you $7,500 to buy furniture for the house. I said, no, we don't, we don't want that money, can it go towards our mortgage, so that it can reduce the payment? And my husband, we all agreed, and they said that, that's it.
Amen. This morning we'll take our text from St. Matthew. Matthew chapter seven. Reading verses seven through eleven. Jesus' wonderful words and Jesus' wonderful promises to each one of us here this morning. Ask and it shall be given you. Seek and ye shall find. Knock and it shall be opened unto you. For everyone. Everyone. That asks it, receive it. And he that seeks it, find it. And him that knocks it, it shall be opened unto him. Or what man is there of you, whom if the son asks bread, will give him a stone? Or if you shall ask a fish, will he give him a serpent? If ye then, being evil, know how to give good gifts unto your children, how much more? Show your Father which is in heaven, give you good things to them that ask of him. How many here want something good? What are you willing to do to receive it? I have a couple of things here that I consider good. What are you willing to do, unless you have peanut allergies? What are you willing to receive these? What are you willing to do to receive these? What, what? Who's asking? Yeah, right there, he's asking. You asking? There you go. How hard was that? Very hard, isn't it? If I am willing to give that to him. If he's just willing to ask. Actually, I was gonna give it to them even if they wouldn't have asked. That's our heavenly Father in heaven. This is Jesus' most famous sermon. It is the most famous sermon that has ever been given. He was there with his disciples. Our Savior, this is the third time now in this Sermon on the Mount that he covers the topic of prayer. His disciples listening to him. And they heard the demands of the beatitudes, the life that we are called to live. Different life than the people out in the world. He challenged them. He stirred them. They wanted to live the life that was described for them in the Sermon on the Mount. Jesus knows what is required for us to live this wonderful life and he knows that it's gonna take prayer. Prayer is a relationship with God. It's an open conversation with God. It's simple. Anybody can pray. Anybody can come to the Lord in faith believing and uttering a prayer to God. It's a conversation that you're having with God. It's nothing complicated. You talk to God and in return, you listen for God to talk to you. That's what prayer is. We seem to complicate prayer, but it's a simple conversation that you are having with the God of heaven. And we know in confidence that when we do pray, God not only hears, but God answers prayer. Earlier in the Sermon on the Mount, Jesus taught them how to pray. He taught them to find a secret place to pray in your closet, so to speak, to have a place, an altar area in your home where you can go alone and pray. He also taught them and he gave them a model of how to pray. In that we know there Jesus describing, this is the model, how to pray and it gives us a wonderful model, a wonderful example, how to come to God. How to acknowledge who God is, how to approach God in reverence to him. Now he finishes the subject of prayer with some incredible encouragement, indescribable encouragement to his disciple by attaching some wonderful promises. Do you know that God's promises are yea and amen to those that believe them? And here God describes and ascribes some wonderful promises to those that would pray. To those that would pray. And these promises, they're unbelievable when you think about it because they're simple. He asks us just to ask. Just to ask, how hard is that? We all can comprehend that. Growing up as kids, you know what it is to ask. We depend on our parents, so we ask, don't we? He tells us to seek and he tells us to knock. These words, ask, seek and knock, they're all verbs and they're all in the present tense. That means that we are continually to ask, we are continually to seek. We are continually to knock on heaven's door. Continually do it. The idea here that Jesus is telling us is that we are to keep asking. That we are to keep seeking the Lord. That we are to keep knocking. Don't give up. Don't give up. Continually ask. We live in a, in a culture, in a society that we want everything instant. It's very efficient society when you stop and think about it because everything moves really fast. I mean, we, we go to a drive-through, we, we want it to go fast. We, we want that process to, to happen real fast. And you know, you judge when you go to a drive-through, we go to In-N-Out quite a bit. I don't know if you've had the privilege to have it in Out, but we highly recommend it from California. But when you go to an In-N-Out, you're expected to wait. There's, there's always ten to fifteen cars ahead of you. No matter what time of the day seems like you go, it's a long wait. But, but we live in this culture, we want everything fast, instant. You got instant coffee. This morning, I, in, in the, in the hotel room, there's a Keurig. Instant, fast. You know, and, and I'm in the appliance business and there's, there's amazing microwave technology today. There's, there's a product that GE has, it's called the Advanium and it's an oven-microwave combination. And this Advanium can bake two large baked potatoes. Oven quality, not microwave quality, but oven quality in about seven minutes. Yes, that's the right response. That is pretty remarkable because most ovens out there take about seven minutes just to preheat. And then another forty-five minutes to an hour to cook the same potatoes. But we, we live in this instant, fast-paced culture. We want things done real fast. We, we, now you can do direct deposit. You get a check, you don't even have to go to the bank. You take a picture of the check and it's instantly loaded into your account. And, and this, we gotta be careful because, you know, it can creep into our prayer and our prayer life. When, when we want God to do everything so fast for us, we gotta be careful. We, we serve a sovereign, wise God that knows what is best for us. And he has our best interest in mind. But, but sometimes we, we gotta be careful because when we pray, we want instant answer to our prayer. God doesn't work like that. Sometimes he does though. You've ever been in trouble? You've ever almost gotten in an accident and all you can utter is, Lord, save me or Lord, help me? And he answers that prayer instantly? Be thankful for that. He does answer prayer like that instantly, we're thankful for that. But we can't just pray and expect God to answer our prayer in a minute, in five minutes. And sometimes even a week or two weeks or a month or even a year. But we need to still be persistent in prayer. We need to not give up in prayer. Even if the Lord does not answer that prayer in one minute. We don't give up. We keep praying, don't quit. It's easy to get discouraged when you are asking. It's easy to just give up. You could say, you could think that my prayer doesn't make a difference, but it does. God hears that prayer and you keep praying that prayer and see how the Lord will answer that prayer. Many people just abandon, they give up in prayer. But God assures us that he does hear our prayers. You know, as far as consistently praying, I thought of the widow in the parable of Luke chapter eighteen that Jesus gave there about this widow that came before a judge, an unjust judge, Jesus told us. And she, she had a case, she had a need, she wanted an answer. And, and, and we're told there that this judge at first wouldn't even hear her. But the Bible says that she continually, day in, day out, she went before this judge and this judge, you know what his reaction was? This lady weary me. She troubles me. She comes to me all the time. And because of that, because she continually persevered asking, he gave in. And Jesus says, how much more? For one of his children that asks, will he not go before them and answer their prayer? Isaiah tells us this about, in the same vein, in the same topic, it tells us, and it shall come to pass that before they call. God already knows your heart. He knows your need before you even come to him. Before we call upon him. I will answer. I will answer. And while they are yet speaking, he says, I will hear. He already knows before we even come to the Lord. He knows what you need this morning. But he expects us to come to him and ask anyway. That's our part. We can only do our part, God will do his part. He will do his part. Be persistent in prayer. You know, our kids, they, they, they learn how to ask very young. Mommy, daddy, can I have this? Mommy, daddy, can I do this? Mommy, daddy, can I go there? They, they're, they're very bold in their asking and they're very persistent too. They weary me sometime. Until I give in. And then if I don't give in, they go to their mom. And they ask their mom until she gives in. You know, we need to be the same way to our heavenly Father. He wants us to come ask, you know, he doesn't get tired of it. No, he's willing to, to give you more than you are willing to receive. That's his heart for us as his children. We thank God for that. You know, mentioned not giving up in prayer in, in Daniel, I believe it's chapter ten. You know, Daniel prayed for twenty-one days. Twenty-one days. Aren't you thankful he didn't give up on the twentieth day? It took twenty-one days. We don't know how long it's gonna take. But for Daniel, for twenty-one days he prayed. And I'm sure he wondered, when is this answer gonna come? No doubt he believed that God was gonna answer his prayer. No doubt that he believed that God is gonna come through for me. I don't know when it's gonna happen, but I'm gonna continue to pray. I believe that Daniel would have prayed more than twenty-one days. The Bible tells us that God did come. There was an issue. There is something that stood in the way that the angel told Daniel. But you know what he told him? From the beginning, from the day you started praying, God heard your prayer. God will hear your prayer. God hears your prayer. You know, and, and God is never too late. He's not. You know, and, and his friend Lazarus. Martha and Mary's brother, when he passed away, the Bible tells us that news got to Jesus. By the time the news got to Jesus, he was dead. Seemed like too late. Too late to pray. Too late to come to the Lord. But you know what? God, Jesus was right on time. Jesus was right on time. You know, the, the glory of God, the, the miracle that happened there to glorify and bless the Lord happened because he wasn't too late. Sometimes we think, oh, there's no hope. This situation's gone way too long. There's a deadline. We, we think of Brother John in, in the hospital. You might think, oh, it's too late for the Lord to heal him. Is it? No, no. No, and we pray, that's why we pray. We have confidence in prayer that God will heal him before he even needs that surgery on Monday. God is not too late. He's never too late. Don't give up in your prayer. Keep asking. Jesus will answer your prayer. He, he gives us some amazing promises here. This is mind-blowing promises. These are Jesus' words. The God of heaven. That can do anything. He tells us this, those that ask will receive. Those that seek will find. Those that keep knocking, that door will be opened unto them. Do you believe that? You believe that this morning? That if you ask, you will receive? That if you seek, you'll find? God will do it for you. He's a wonderful God. Now we gotta be careful what we ask. It's gotta be according to his will. It's gotta be good for us. You know, we live in a very materialistic world and, and a lot of people equate God's blessing, God answering, God, you know, blessing upon our life with your material things that you have. That's not how it works in God's economy. You, you just don't ask and think that God is gonna give you every materialistic thing that you think you need. That doesn't work that way. But just because God does bless you with those things, you know, it's, it's, it's not being rich that is a problem. It's the love of money. It's your desire to use those things for yourselves. James tells us that. Why we don't have them? Because we, God knows our heart, what are you gonna use them for? So what can we ask God for? What can you ask God for this morning? What are you asking God for? What is your need this morning? Have you asked? Have you got down in prayer and say, Lord, you know my heart, you know what I need? Some here in this large crowd, there's no doubt that somebody here is not saved. You need to ask God to save you this morning. And he will. It's a simple prayer. You come with the Lord with a repented heart, he will answer and hear your prayer and he will save you this morning if you need to be sanctified. It's God's will for you, even our sanctification. God will sanctify you holy this morning. God will baptize you with the Holy God will baptize you with the Holy Ghost and with fire from on high. That's why we gather here. We need the Lord to answer our prayers. We can ask him in that Sermon on the Mount, the things that Jesus told us to go out and be a disciple for him. If you need to be healed, you can ask God to heal you. It's his promise. If you want to shine your light in this dark world, ask God to have you shine your light in this dark world. You need to forgive and be forgiven? Ask for forgiveness. Have God not only forgive you, but maybe you need others to forgive you. Ask for forgiveness. God will hear and answer your prayer. If you don't ask to be forgiven, our heavenly Father says, "He will not forgive us." Ask for forgiveness. You wanna do good deeds? That's what we're called to do as Christians, is to do good. He told us to lay our treasure in heaven. Those are all according to his will. These are the things that we can ask and seek and knock for. You need wisdom? Ask God for wisdom. He'll give it to you. You need to be revived? That's why we gather together. So we, God will revive us. Ask God to revive you. Don't worry about anybody else. Just ask God to revive you. Let that revival start in your heart. And it will spread to the person next to you. These are things we can ask for. Ask God to revive you. He tells us that we, being evil humans, know how to good gifts. How many parents here have ever given a bad gift to their children? Anybody? Have you ever played a trick on your children? I mean, it seems kinda cruel here that Jesus uses the examples here. If your child would ask you for bread, would you give him a stone? If he asked you for some meat, some fish, will you give him a serpent? I don't like snakes. Some people like snakes. I'm not one of them. But I sure wouldn't give my child a snake if they asked me. I mean, it's almost like ridiculous here that Jesus is using these examples because he wants to point to us that we given, we know how to give good gifts to our children. How much more? I love that statement. How much more? That's God's heart for you. This is how he views you. He says, "How much more will our heavenly Father give you, all things that are good for you?" In another place, he says, "Give you the Holy Spirit." How much more? This morning, that's his view towards us, is, "How much more can I do for you? How much more can I bless you? How much more can I make your life an example to others? How much more can I use you?" That's his view towards us this morning. We serve a mighty God. You know, our resources are very limited, even when our children ask for things. We can only do so much. Our God, he owns the cattle on a thousand hills. Our God is a giver. Our God is good. He knows what is good for us. He says to you and I, "How much more do I wanna do for you? How much more will I do for you if you just come and ask me?" This morning, we want to ask God. We want to seek the Lord. Don't leave this place until you ask, until you seek, and until you knock. The Lord will bless you. I wanna close with one verse. Hebrews 11:6 says this. "But without faith it is impossible." How much faith do you need? It would be the question. "The faith of agreeing of musters seed." "The littlest of faith in the biggest God in the universe." "Without faith is impossible to please him. For he that cometh to God must believe." This morning, you're asking, you're seeking, you're knocking, believe God. Believe him. That he is. And I've had 35 years to prove God. And I'm telling you, this verse is true. I've been able to prove God. That he is. He is. And that he is a rewarder. You're asking this morning, he will reward you. You're seeking him, he will reward you. You're knocking, he will reward you. "He is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him." That's the key. Be persistent. Don't give up. You know, I believe the Lord wants to answer some prayers that you've been praying for a long time today. This morning. Can't be in a better place. The Lord's already been here. If you haven't felt the Lord this morning so far already, where have you been? The Lord is here. He wants to bless us as his children. So why not ask? Why not seek? Why not knock? He's a rewarder of them that diligently seek you. It could take more than a minute. It could take more than five minutes. You know, the Lord knows your heart. He knows how long you're willing to take. If you're willing to take time to pray this morning, he will bless you. He will reward you. He will give you the desire of his heart, of your heart. He wants the desire, his desire is to give you the desire of your heart. He will reward you this morning. Let him sing 195. He will reward you this morning. We're gonna sing 195.